October the 10th, 2023, this is our regular Northern Lebanon School Board meeting. I call this meeting to order. Mr. Erdman, would you please do the flag salute?
We please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to announce publicly that the board met in exec session following last week's meeting for a financial workshop. This time, Ms. Martin, could we get a roll call?
Yes, Buck?
Yeah.
England?
Here.
Oliver?
Present.
Williams?
Here.
Murray?
Here.
Klein?
Here.
Erdman?
Here.
Arlo?
Here.
Nam?
Here remotely.
All members are present.
Okay, moving on to adoption of the agenda. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
Second? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor approving or adopting the agenda as is, please indicate with a yes or an i.
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. All right, this time we have some presentations. Okay, the high school students of the month for September are Brooke Beams-Durfor and Grace, I'm gonna get this name right, Herenji. Okay, for October, they were Hudson Brown and Carter Cheslock. The award is sponsored jointly by the Fredericksburg and Jonestown Lions Club. Middle school students of the month for September is Kayla Dunmoyer, and for October is Bryant, okay, Bakariza. This award is sponsored by Northern Lebanon County Rotary Club, and each recipient will be recognized at a future meeting of the Rotary Club. Okay, now Carter is typically here to do a presentation, but we understand that he's unable to make it tonight. So we have our student council president, Katie Eisenhower, and Sarah Price doing a presentation. You can come up to the-
Hi, everyone. I'm Katie Eisenhower.
I'm Sarah Price.
And we're just gonna tell you a little bit about student council right now. So last Friday, we did homecoming hall decorating, and I would say it was pretty successful. We had a lot of student involvement, and the hallways look pretty good if you ever find yourself walking down them. This week is our spirit week, and there's also been a lot of student participation. Today was twin day, and tomorrow is class colors. This Friday, we have our pep rally at the end of the day, which we have moved the schedule around to accommodate for that. We have a lot of students signing up, and we even have homecoming court participating. At that event, we will announce all the fall sports, homecoming court, and we will even pie a teacher in the face for the chocolate fundraiser. Then that night at the football game afterwards, we have our bonfire, which our advisors pushed really hard for, so I'm glad that we can make that happen. So I think a lot of students will show up to that since it's after the game, and it's like tradition, because I remember freshman year, we had it, and I definitely had a lot of fun, so I will be attending that. And then Saturday, we have homecoming decorating in the morning, and then afterwards in the afternoon, we have the homecoming dance. So yeah, that's kind of what's going on.
All right, thank you for the update.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to superintendent's report.
Okay, as the girls mentioned, it is homecoming week. A lot of neat things going on there. If you get a chance, come out to some of the events this week. Plenty of sporting events. You can also shop around the dance on Saturday if you're interested. We had a spirit day last week. I sent some pictures of that. Really neat time. The band marched over, playing the drums. I heard them coming. And they came over and played for the kids as they arrived. The cheerleaders were here. A lot of our senior athletes were here throughout the day doing things with the kids. So it's been really nice being next door and being able to utilize that. In terms of the staff, we just had an in-service on Monday. While the secondary did some group, some department work together. We were really happy this year to be able to be together as a building. We had our reading specialists prepare and then deliver the in-service this year. It's the first time since I've been here, and the first time for some of them ever to present to our staff. They were talking about the science of reading, breaking down the individual elements of it, and then also effective use of our language arts blocks, including small group instruction. So really pleased with the work that they did, and I hope they'll probably be upset with me when I say this, but hope to continue to utilize our experts in those roles, because I think it's meaningful to have our own teachers teaching our staff. And I did send you an email today and just brought the book. It was a summary of the first chapter. This is the book study we're doing as leadership this year, and I am gonna keep the board appraised as I read through it as well. It's about school culture. And you know, some things in here that I think sometimes there's confusion between culture and climate. Culture is more long-term and just a lot of good information, a pretty easy read, but I'll continue to get you summaries as we go through, and if you have questions about it, let me know. But I'm trying to educate the staff as well as we go through the year. That's the end of my report.
Hey, thanks for your report. Any questions for Gary? Okay, we're moving on to old business, any old business. Okay, we're gonna move on to public comment. Interested people are asked to have completed a request to address the board form by 3:00 PM and submit that to the board secretary. My understanding is there were no requests. Okay. We'll move on. Okay, moving on to items for for board action. It should be noted that public notice was given for this meeting in accordance with Act 84 of 1986. By notice of the president, the following action requires a voice vote, or the following actions requires a voice vote. All votes in favor shall be stated with an i or yes. All votes opposed shall be stated with a nay or no. All members abstaining shall state abstain when prompted. The votes will be recorded in the minutes as unanimous roll call vote unless there was any votes in opposition or abstention. If necessary, the president may subsequently call for a roll call vote to be recorded in the minutes. Okay. Consent agenda.
Okay, number eight is the consent agenda. We went over last week. We did, as I mentioned before, add one mentor to that list, but other than that, it's the same list we had last week. That's that you would approve that as presented.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve items 8.1 to 8.9? Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, indicate by saying yes or i.
I.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to discussion agenda.
Yes, 9.1 and 9.2 are the authorization for administration to work with PFM Financial Advisors, and then also the resolution for the general obligation bond. Now, we do have, Steve is here with us online. Steve, is there anything you wanted to go over with those two items?
Thank you. Thank you very much. And once again, my name's Steve Havas. I'm with the law firm Stock Leader. We've acted as bond counsel for the school district in the past. So, and I think Brad Remig and Melissa Hughes have been before the board in the past to explain the financing that's being proposed at this point in time, which is really to help assist the school district fund their capital construction fund and fund their capital projects. The first motion actually authorizes the finance team to move forward, get all the documentation together, and get this, get the bond issued to a closing. The second document is a resolution that actually authorizes the school district to incur up to $18 million for the purpose of funding their capital projects. In accordance with the Local Government Unit Debt Act, you need to approve the incurrence of debt by way of a resolution. We'll take care of an application that will be sent to DCD. They will review it to make sure the incurrence of debt is within your debt limits, and once they approve it, we'll be able to go to a closing at that point in time. You've adopted a resolution over the past few years, so you're, you know pretty much what's going on at this point in time, but I just want to touch on a few highlights at this point. As part of the resolution, you are providing a covenant to the bondholders that you will incur taxes sufficient to pay debt service on an annual basis, that you include that debt service amount in your budget on an annual basis, and pay it timely on an annual basis. This is a general obligation debt, so the only thing you're pledging is your taxing power for the payment of the debt service that becomes due and owing on an annual basis. Within the resolution, you are agreeing to provide to the reporting services, which is called Emma, your annual financial information, and so far, your business manager has been taking care of that, and Spud done a great job making sure that she gets to them that information on a timely basis that will continue as a result of this bond issue. You're appointing Fulton Bank as your paying agent. They've acted as your paying agent in the past, and they've done a great job. You're appointing Stock Leader as your bond counsel and PFM as your financial advisor. And then finally, the resolution does authorize the officers of the school district to take any and all action necessary to not only approve the resolution and send the application to DCD, but actually execute any and all documents at closing. We anticipate that the closing will be in about five weeks. And that's 24 pages summed up pretty quickly, but I'd be happy to take any questions. So one, one thing I do need to point out, I'm sorry, the resolution identifies a maximum amount of $18 million. As PFM has identified for you in the past, that this bond issue will not be in excess of $15 million. We are going to take advantage of the small issuer exemption for arbitrage purposes under the Internal Revenue Code, and that has a maximum limit of $15 million on an annual basis. So I think they've talked to you about trying to tier in your financing over a number of years, and this year, we're gonna take advantage of the small issuer exemption. So ultimately, when they go out for an auction for the sale of the bonds, they'll make sure that they size it for less than $15 million, and ultimately, after the sale occurs, PFM will bring back to the school district a confirmation of that sale, and this resolution authorizes the superintendent and the business manager to execute that confirmation, so long as it's consistent with the authorization that's provided in the resolution.
Any questions for Steve? Steve, we hope you're feeling okay.
Yeah, it's a lot more to come, I'm told.
Okay.
But thank you.
Done. All right, if there are no questions on that specific item or any of the others, we will vote on these together. So could I have a motion to approve 9.1 through 9.5? You still need to go ahead.
We can do them all together, but I didn't. I only did nine, one and two. 9.3, but thank you. I appreciate the trust. 9.3 is the, we talked about this when we approved the CBA, that we were gonna be working on the co-curriculars. The other piece that came out of it, we divided it into two. There were some grammatical mistakes, some wording clarity that we wanted to bring as we, as we looked through it more and more closely, and as did NLEA. I mean, some of the adjustments on here is simple, is adding an S to it. So, but we wanted to try to clean up some of that. Some of that's been on there for years, to be honest, and just has kind of been regurgitated because of the way we cut and paste. So we have that addendum in 9.3, and then we have that extracurricular that lists all of our positions and a salary schedule for the next four years, and then that's listed there as well. And 9.5 is policy 707 that we recently approved. I had, I had given you a letter that we had from someone who tends to use our facility twice a year, and kind of asking for some consideration for her event because she needs more than the three months that's listed on the schedule. What I'm proposing is a line that would go into the policy, underscheduling, that would say groups three and four wishing to schedule events prior to the dates outlined above. If you recall, there's a list there of when they can put things in, must submit a request to the board of directors for approval. That way, if someone has a big event that they need to get set in stone ahead of time, before that, we could bring it to the board and we could approve it. So that, that would be my recommendation for that policy. Now, now we're good.
Okay, now any more questions for Gary?
I'm going to talk with her after this, because right now, we couldn't approve the date anyway. I'm going to talk with her and let her know that while I can get board approval, what I can't guarantee due to potential renovation is the facility will be available. And that'll be dependent upon this, once the bids are accepted, the contract, the construction manager, working with the contract to look at timelines and what's gonna be where, and summer will be heavily, they're gonna try to do a lot in summer, because there's no one here. So I can't guarantee to her, and she's gonna have to make a decision what that deadline is.
Okay, we'll do this again, and I do trust you, Gary, and I trust that everyone has read, read this before they walked in, so this shouldn't, should not all be new to them. But that said, can I now have a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Erdman? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say i or yes?
I.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
For 10.1 information, I forgot to let Leanne talk. She had some news on investments. Sorry, go ahead.
Thanks, Gary. I just wanted to draw your attention to the one report in there, the cash flow balances. If you've looked at that, it's all of our bank accounts and the rates, and as you can see, we're very thankful for First Citizens Community Bank. They have really been working for our business, and they have a very high interest rate for us right now in their money market. But anyway, the news I wanted to share was that in the first quarter, we had $125,000 in interest revenue that we brought into the school district, just having our investments in the bank.
That's good. Okay, information.
That's, that was all we had for that.
That's all you have? Okay. All right, moving on to reports. Then CTC Director Klein?
Nothing to report for you this month. I'll have something next, next month. Thank you.
Okay. IU 13 Director Murray?
Yes. Wanted to let you know what we communicated to the IU board, what you are to Jonestown, the sale of Jonestown, the building, and the IU plan new center in Lebanon County. That all parts of our commitment to serve Lebanon County Jonestown Elementary School, for the northern problem, northern Lebanon School District, this new site will host center-based location for IU programs, making it dangerous for students to come and live in here. IU 13 look forward to the opportunity to expand our role, part of the, um, teaching, so, I like to get the importance of having full buildings and, and allowing the IU to expand this area. And then I just have this really great video that I like the impact that IU students are having on the LVC campus.
Hi, I'm Carly Hunden. I am an early childhood special ed major, and I love having that Lincoln Lebanon IU 13 school to work kids on our campus, because they are something I am passionate about. I worked with the IU for a couple of summers and in and out for other things, and having them here has been a light in the LVC campus, and they are such great people to meet.
Hi, my name is Maddie Ayres. I am a junior early childhood special education dual major, and having the IU 13 school to work kids here means the world to me. They have given me a new perspective of life here at LVC, and just having them include and incorporate in everything we do here is something that could change other perspectives of students as well. So I'm hoping that this year, we have a lot more in plan, because last year was definitely new experience for everyone on campus, but everyone loved it. So I can't wait to incorporate them more into own campus activities, get them involved in everyday life here, so they really do feel like they're a part of the LVC community, because they are to me, and I feel like I have been changed since I have met them.
So you guys don't think you can film videos, and just all the kinds of things that the IU does, but they really are very proactive, very just strength-based as far as how they view their students and how they view the programs that they have, and this is just one highlight of what the IU does. So just wanted to share that with you, because you guys don't get to see those every month. So that's the end of my report. Thank you.
All right, thank you for sharing that. Director Murray? Legislative Liaison Director England, do you have an update?
I do. North Carolina recently passed legislation making them the eighth state this year to provide universal choice programs for all or nearly all of their students in their state, and they're joining two other states that have already done that, which is increasing dramatically the number of students in the nation that have choice available. So it's really impossible to know what the future holds as far as Pennsylvania, providing school choice. But either way, my hope is that Northern Lebanon will continue to improve so that we'll be, we will be the school of choice in this area.
Thanks for that update. All right, PSBA Liaison Director Buck?
I spent a little bit of time looking back through the many emails that we get from PSBA, and I picked two news stories that were highlighted by them to highlight here. One kind of follows what was just mentioned about charter schools, especially cyber charter. And one article talked about House Bill HB 1422, which is charter, a charter reform bill that was passed the House. It's now in the Senate. It's not slated for vote yet in the Senate. Hopefully, it will be. But this would save districts a lot of money. It sets a tuition cap on cyber charter, cyber charter school tuition while placing accountability measures in place for those schools. We know that, and now, don't we pay like $2 million every year to cyber charters? So this would hopefully significantly reduce that cost. The second I found interesting, it seems timely for NL. There was an article in Education Week on October 5th. This was a study looking at 15,000 school bonds across the nation in 28 different states, and they were looking at how taxpayer money spent for schools for different projects affect test scores. And so if it was spent for this project, did it affect test scores better or worse than for a different type of project? And what they found is that when money was spent for HVAC systems, for improving HVAC systems and for improving leaky roofs, this did have a significant increase on test scores. However, there was not much change in test scores when money was invested in athletic facilities or expanded classroom space, but they did note that these improvements, taxpayer, taxpayer-funded improvements do raise property values. So they don't affect test scores directly, but they do raise property values. So I thought that was interesting, because we're doing a little bit of both here at NL, and especially those HVAC improvements. So hopefully, we see the test scores follow.
All right. Great update. Thank you for that. Okay, we're gonna move on to new business, any new business. Okay, there are some dates to remember in, um, uh, in your agenda there. Other than that, I think we will move to adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn? All right, do I have a second? Okay, second, any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor say i or yes?
I.
Any opposed? None opposed. Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.